Right.
I'd like to tell the regular meeting of the Punk City Public Education Board.
Sure, if you can, let's do it.
We'll start with the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious Creator, as we approach Thanksgiving, we gather with hearts full of gratitude for the blessings bestowed upon our school district. We thank you for the tireless dedication of our educators, the curiosity of our students, and unwavering support of our community. Bless our school board with wisdom and foresight as we navigate the path of education. May the spirit of Thanksgiving inspire collaboration and understanding among us. We express appreciation for opportunities that shape young lives and foster a love for learning. In this season of gratitude, guide our actions to cultivate an environment where knowledge thrives and compassion abounds. Amen.
I'm going to begin with the recognition of the right officials. We'll start off with the presentation of Employee of the Month. Certified Employee of the Month is Kathy Orr.
Who will go first?
Oh, sorry, yeah. I was just telling her I need new glasses, I think, because I'm really focusing on the words. Yes, roll them up.
Don Newsom.
Here.
Robin Riley.
Here.
Hannah Rowland.
Present.
Judy Trup.
Present.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Here.
Okay, now, let's move on to the presentation of the Employee of the Month in Department of Education and we're going to start off with the Certified Employee of the Month, Kathy Orr at Councilor of Pomax School.
Friend Ted. I'm Shane Dinn. I get the privilege of speaking on behalf of Ms. Orr. Ms. Orr is a fairly new, although it seems like you've been there forever now, member of the Poe High team. And she really quickly learned everything there was to learn in a short amount of time about credits and graduation checks and et cetera at the high school. And then she went on and got all kinds of special projects that she was trying to help the district figure out how to adapt to some new legislation, including some alternative diplomas and so forth for a segment of our population. And she jumped right in. She led us through that. She has shown grace and patience and willingness to do whatever it takes, and we truly appreciate you, Mrs. Orr. Thank you so much.
I'll take them in the hawken.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Congrats.
And our Support Employee of the Month is Robert Hope, the head of Evening Custody at Pomax High School.
Mr. Hope is everywhere, all the time, and doing everything he can. But for a while, he was filling in daytime at the high school, and everybody got spoiled because everything got done real quick and everything got done well. And everyone was always talking about, wow, what a difference Mr. Hope did. And they were always coming to me going, do you know what he does? Yeah, I have an idea. He cleans this, he cleans that. The thing that really stood out is speaking with a lot of the fellow support staff, secretaries and so forth, they said, he always makes us feel like our issue is important. No matter what it is, no matter what we say, he always listens and he gets right on it, just like it's the most important thing he has to do, and I know he's got a million things to do. Robert, thank you so much. We appreciate your video work. Thirty-two.
And I'll tell the board, you think he has a lot of keys on his head, we should see it in his office. And he knows where every one of those keys go.
Our Friends of Peace Lutheran Church. And we have some representatives that will join us. Mrs. Orr.
Friends of Peace Lutheran Church has been a friend of education for many years, and these are just some examples of things that they have done to help us. They have paid off lunch bills for students at Union Elementary. They have adopted families at Christmas to make sure they have food and gifts. They have made face coverings during COVID for students who didn't have any. They donated needed clothing items to elementary schools. They provided teacher treats to every school site. And currently, they are doing a change drive, and they are donating those funds each month to child nutrition to help pay unpaid lunch debt. And Punk City Public Schools is fortunate to have a giving partner in our community that's always willing to help, and we truly appreciate all of your generosity and helplessness. Congratulations.
Thank you guys so much. If you have one more in the house, I'll take you guys' picture. Thank you guys so much for coming. Thank you for your volunteer.
So we have a important conference to... All right, we are moving on to the Superintendents' Report of Education Award Discussion.
Right. Start from this front a little bit. I love that. Static there. Good evening. I hope everyone's doing well. It is November thirteenth. It's a special day, you know, as we celebrate our senior board member, Mr. Riley's 75th birthday, seventy-five years young and still kicking. He's a better man than me. I don't know if I'd be here on my birthday, but we'll sit on that. Well, hey, I wanted to do, as a sake of transparency, just a quick overview of some of the data that we have as a district. And, you know, part of our roles as administrators in this school district, well, just in our daily life, is how do we improve? And I think that part of that is looking at our data. Now, we can agree or disagree that some of this data may have its fallacies or may fall short in some regards, but it's data that we are measured by and we're held accountable to it. So as administrators, we have a responsibility to communicate that to our fellow administrators, to our teachers, our students, and most importantly, our community, to ensure that they know that our data is important to us. And as we try to strive each day to improve our student outcomes, what we're doing day in, day out. First thing I wanted to look at was our average ACT scores for districts and states. This is published by the ACT Company. Just a quick overview of where Punk City stacks compared to the state. I'm happy to report our last numbers are above state averages in all of the sub-score areas, English Math, Reading Science, and that overall composite score of eighteen point four. Again, this is just a snapshot data of what a student takes on the ACT in one day at the high school, and this is how we are, one of the key measures that we're measured with. So how does that stack up with the last six years of data for Punk City High School and our community? You can see there, our last six years, you can see in 2019, 2020, we had a testing data due to this pandemic. We saw an increase in every subcategory with a slight dip there in the science composite. I do not have the state numbers for '23 yet. Those have not been released. I mean, I have the overall composite, I just don't have the breakdown of subcategories. I don't know how many high school students took it. I am estimating it's around thirty-seven thousand if you look at the trend data for the last six years of high school students in Oklahoma, take the ACT score. But I am happy to report that those numbers increased, albeit just a fraction of a percent or a point there. But where do we stack, I guess, really as a whole compared to other states? If you look at the ACT websites, you can, they have a listing of all the states that do do the ACT. And it's important to note that some states don't require the ACT test, so I've only listed the states that require about ninety percent to a hundred percent of high school students that have to take the ACT. I broke down the states. You can see Oklahoma, the composite of seventeen point eight. And then you can see our Punk City High School, where that ranks compared to other students against Tennessee, Kentucky, Louisiana, Alabama. I'm a little reticent on list Wyoming, but it is there. It's the highest one of the hundred percents, just because no one lives in Wyoming. So I think that was all forty high school kids that go in the state of Wyoming. But you can see, I'm kind of proud of how our high school students stack compared to other states. I think some of those mirror closely to some of the homestead graphics here in the Midwest, Southwest, wherever we fall with that definition, if you will. A lot of data we look at, this comes off of our State Accountability website. This is off the high school data. This is some contextual data that we get from the State Accountability Reporting Office. You can see our assessment performance there, our thirty-six percent of students that are at C to grade level standards compared to the states, twenty-seven percent. You can see our graduation rates based off the four-, five-, and six-year cohort numbers. If you even go back to the definition of what a cohort is, that's the students that enter in their freshman year, and then we track that information to see if they do graduate in that four-year timeline. You get points if they graduate five years, you get partial points, and if you graduate in six years, you get even fewer points, but we do track that information. And our intent is to make sure that every student that enters into our high school only leave with a diploma, or the military, or a career, or college, which is our goal at our high school. You can also see our attendance rate compared to what the state is, sixty-four percent to seventy-seven percent. I think that's indicative of some community and cultural values that we have, that we're starting to struggling and getting back in a post-COVID environment where attendance matters and being where you're supposed to be each and every day and each and every hour is important. And we have just a community issue there that we've got to address. And if you remember when I came in as superintendent back in August, one of the three goals that we announced was we were going to focus on attendance, how we can help improve those numbers as well with behavior and also our school culture and climate there. Breaking down the data, we're going to look at here a little bit our school report card information. Before I show you those school report card letters, I want you to know that they're comprised of four different categories for your elementary and middle schools, and then your high school's going to have a little bit more information. So this is a breakdown of what Trout Elementary School's report cards that we just showed this year. This is going to show is letter A to C, and that's broken down with academic achievement, twenty point nine oh. That's a snapshot indicator of where they perform on their end-of-the-year assessment. So on the Monday, they take their reading and math assessments or whatever date that is, that is based on whether they were proficient or non-proficient, or if they were advanced or not advanced, so they get a variety of different points on that. Academic growth compares their snapshot data from a year back, so they look at if second graders are performing better than they did in first grade, or vice versa for fifth, fourth, or third grade. ELPA progress, that's kind of an interesting one. This is language proficiency, and you have to have twenty-five students in your school to categorize this as a subgroup. What's interesting is Trout last year was an A school, only had twenty-three students, so they were not scored in this area in ELPA, which I think is what obviously is breaking down the letter grade here this year. They had twenty-seven or twenty-eight students, I can't remember exactly, that categorized in that subgroup. And that test involves four different components, how our students that are learning English are speaking the language, writing the language, reading the language, and then no one missed up the fourth one, listening to the language. And one of those components, and I was thinking about this, how students that may be learning the English language that progress, they have to talk into a microphone and speak into a microphone. And we have to assess them on how will they speak into the microphone. When you bring in a couple of test coordinators that may not know that student, and they're a kindergarten or first grader, and you say, read this passage to me, they may not have the ability or want to at that time. But it's a snapshot, and we have to record that information and score it. And if your elementary school or middle school has more than twenty-five students that categorize as English language proficient, we have to record that in our state accountability data. So you can see there, not that there's any excuses, but it's just breaking out, trying to understand the data a little bit clearer, that sometimes that subgroup can really have a large impact on your school's letter grade moving forward. Then chronic absenteeism, that's scored from zero to ten. And Trout and Williams are going to be two of your highest scoring ones for attendance. And while the rest of us are really struggling with making sure that our students are showing up each and every day. Chronic absenteeism, to get a ding there in that one, you have to miss more than ten percent of the school year. And so for us, that would be, what, sixteen point five days? And we have a lot that miss one sixteen point five days for any reason outside of school activity. So if you're suspended, that counts. If you're sick, that counts. If your personal business, that counts against your attendance. So we have to just be mindful of making sure that kids are showing up each and every day to school. And some of that, we can help influence as a school district, but at the end of the day, we're really going to need money from parents and to get their kids to school and make sure that they're showing up and being here. So we're acting our brains on resources and wanting to do there. So with school report card data, you can see here, I just showed you a little breakdown of what Trout, on the right-hand column is the last year's letter grade, on the left-hand column is this year's letter grade. Garfield, Bitter Brew, I'm very proud of them on that. And then you can see we did have some declines in Union there, Liberty and Trout. But again, when we go break down that data, it's chronic absenteeism that's getting us, that's pulling us down. Or the language proficiency. We're looking at what we can do. We will be breaking down this data in more detail with our principals, who will be breaking down the principals and through the PLCs to help make sure that our teachers are aware of what we're looking for and how we're held accountable as a school and a school district. This is what Trout and I kind of showed you the 2023 numbers. Again, you can see there compared to 2022, how they were an A school compared to where they are at this year as a C school. ELPA progress is really what's pulling us down in that area. Their absenteeism, their increase, so they had better attendance in the past year. Academic growth was just off a little bit, and the academic treatment dipped a little bit, but there was no reason they shouldn't be a B school if we can get our language proficiency up there for that. And again, we just hit that threshold of twenty-five students, which triggered that accountability data there on ELPA progress, so we'll just be mindful of that. The report cards are very similar for all the schools except Poe High, because, one, we don't have academic growth at Poe High, because we don't take the same assessment year in, year out, so you can't compare to freshmen to see what you did in sophomore or vice versa on that. But what we do have is academic achievement, which comes in through a variety of assessments there. Same thing with the language proficiency progress and chronic absenteeism. Graduation is how many students are graduating in that four-, five-, and six-year window that we talked about. You get the most points if they graduate within four years of starting high school, partial points for five and six. And in post-secondary opportunities, I'm really excited about this one in that, moving forward, this is how many of your students are participating in something outside of the high school as far as career tech classes, concurrent enrollment, internship, or some sort of skills traits. So I think in, on this board agenda, you're going to see the contract to approve that partnership with Punk City Development Authority that would help fund our internship coordinator, where we had, well, how many did we have in the year prior to this, Dr. Hopkins?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight to this, this past school year's. Obviously, we have a hundred and nine students at the high school participating in internships. So I think our post-secondary opportunities at the high school are just going to continue to flourish there. But that's the good, bad, and the ugly, just a quick, just snippet of what our data is for this community in our district. Again, this is, a lot of this is snapshot data. You know, I really like academic growth. I'm a big believer in growth. You know, if you look at a growth mindset model, it's not making excuses for the students you have, but it's doing the work through the school year to improve every one of the students that walk through our doors. And I think that's a big part of our community and our culture that we're trying to instill with our teachers is that we can't make excuses for if they have gaps in reading or English or COVID learning loss. All we are responsible for is when they show up at 8:00 AM, that we progress them and advance them and get them at a higher level when we finish the night. But I'm happy to take any questions from the board or any discussion. Well, then, we can talk about more fun things. We're moving right on. Hey, after the holidays, we're excited to announce a partnership with Punk City Main Street. Our fifth graders are going to have the opportunity to all participate in the ice rink, Ice on the Plaza. We were using some of our gifted funds for an experience for each of our fifth graders. Last year, we sent every elementary student through the immersive art experience at City Arts, overwhelming positive support and community. This year, we'd like to see if we could get our fifth graders through Main Street, Ice on the Plaza. To do that, though, they're going to need principals and teachers are going to need to make sure they get permission from parents and also that each of those parents fills out a waiver, so as they try the artificial ice on Ice on the Plaza right after the holidays. Our transportation department and Terry Mobile have worked really hard on getting the schedule ready. One of the other things I'm really excited about, and Dr. Hopkins tells us we're going to get this done in spring of 2024, is new course guides and pathway catalogs that are going to just, so if a student comes into Poe High and says, you know, I really have an interest in being a doctor or going to school to be a doctor, that they can flip open a course guide and see what classes they can take from a freshman all the way through a senior with different experiences and partnerships with either career tech or internships or concurrent enrollment. And it can be anything. Well, I mean, we're patterning this off of some different examples off of Broken Arrow and trying to tailor make it for Punk City, so we're really excited to have that. Our goal is to have this ready for when they go to enroll as eighth graders into freshmen this spring. And the same for ninth graders to go to sophomores and juniors and seniors. So we've actually got some estimates from A-plus-twenty that are going to help us with a template, creating a template, so we will own the design and we can just update it and refresh it each year with either courses that we have to add or drop because of either popularity or not being popular. So I'm excited about having that flexibility and ability to add and take away from that course guide. Be looking for that this spring, and I'm saying it out in the public alley, so Dr. Hopkins has that public accountability. There. The other thing that we talked about, the city has approved Wildcat Way, changing Brookfield. This is a mock template of what the new street sign on Brookfield will look like, right between Solons and the new indoor facility. If you guys have any creative opinions, now would be the time to share it on the street sign before we do it. But I was real excited to be able to change that street sign. And this is just applying to that block between Solons and the new indoor facility there. The street address of the new indoor facility, we will unplug it that way, so I think that will be real neat for our community and for our students moving forward. And in last month, you guys did approve Native American Heritage Month, and we have our mini pow-mas scheduled across the district. If you have an opportunity to get out and about, these are great events that our students participate in, our Native American community participates, and our kids really enjoy it. So that will be this Thursday and Friday at each of our elementary sites, our middle schools. So if you have an opportunity to pop in, we'd love to have you. But it's a really great event that I think our students really enjoy, and I really appreciate this board for supporting that. Never. As far as my new superintendent training, this is my last slide, Judy, and then we'll be done on this. My next December seventh training for my First Year Superintendent Academy is called Creating a Community of Care for All Students. Last week, I was at a buildings, bonds, and construction meeting for new superintendents. That one, I felt really comfortable with. I'm excited about the new community of care for all students as we engage with the other seven of these new superintendents in Oklahoma. You can talk about what we're doing as far as creating that new culture climate that's really creating a level playing field for each of the students that walk into our district moving forward. But I'm halfway through after December seventh with all of these trainings, and I've learned a ton. There's a lot of homework that comes with it. If you remember, last October, I had to do an administrator's evaluation certification exam. I'm happy to report I did pass that, so I am able to continue on, but then be able to evaluate each of our administrators that works in our district. We've got a good spring semester of training coming up. But the Community of Care one will be December seventh down in Oklahoma City. And next week, or actually this week on Wednesday, I'm going to be spending time with the Bartlesville Superintendent in their district, visiting with them about some of the programs and bids that they have for their district. And I think that's a great opportunity to not only build that collaboration between our two districts, but also a very informative learning experience for myself as a superintendent. So I'm really appreciative of this board's support in creating those collaborative partnerships between neighboring six-day school districts and my opportunity to get trained and certified for maybe being a superintendent in this state. But are there any questions for me? That's the conclusion of my superintendent board report. Was this your best birthday report ever, Rob?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you all.
Moving on to item five, the consent agenda. A motion is required to be reported, consent agenda is currently rising and pending. Order members may, however, call for a separate vote on any or all items as still in consent agenda. We have two items, amended from October ninth, 2023 regular board meeting, and November seventh, 2023 special board meeting, as well as contracts and agreements under 10,000.
Motion to approve. Second.
Approved by Don. Seconded by Robyn. Any discussion or questions, please? Call for vote.
Judy Trup.
Aye.
Robin Riley.
Aye.
Don Newsom.
Aye.
Hannah Rowland.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Item six, action items. A motion is required. Item one is considering taking action on the following district financial reports, A through N.
We're in a good meeting. Problem real nice.
Oh, yeah.
He also made a motion.
Robyn's made the motion. End of this second. Any special questions? Well, was that, I said, anything to report on those? Okay. No questions? Mary Ann, call for vote.
Hannah Rowland.
Aye.
Judy Trup.
Aye.
Don Newsom.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Robin Riley.
Aye.
Item two, considering taking action on setting a date, time and location for the 2024 regular board meetings. Those are listed in your attachments. There's only three that will be on the, there's only three that have an exception of being on the second Monday of the month, and they're listed there, so.
Who to approve?
Who to approve by Don? Any discussion or questions? Call for vote.
Hannah Rowland.
Aye.
Don Newsom.
Aye.
Robin Riley.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Judy Trup.
Aye.
Considering taking action on hiring of following individuals as an adjunct teacher specified, can school for elementary education? Any questions?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Call for vote.
Judy Trup.
Aye.
Hannah Rowland.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Robin Riley.
Aye.
Don Newsom.
Aye.
Item four, considering taking action on the approval of three of the federal loan tests for renovation projects funded by the federal grant, the S of three dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Don.
Second.
Seconded by Judy. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I've got a question on that. Do we know how much, if we decide to sell a building, what percentage the federal government wants for it?
Barbara.
We, we do not know that. We just have, we would go through the State Board of Education at that point in time, and they would notify then the federal government, but there is no information right now as to what percentage.
So if I read this correctly, any expenditure over $500,000 for property, we decide to terminate the contract sale, whatever, the federal government gets some percent of the money.
I think they have a procedural right to waive it.
Yes.
They can use it for federal use. I don't think there's any financial tie into that. But again, I don't, I don't think we'll have to worry about selling the high school or any of those sites anytime soon. But we would talk to the State Department if we got to that point on what we would do.
And those three are the only three that we use as a procedure.
Correct. And honestly, I'm going to credit Mark Kusick and our federal programs team, because we were one of the first districts in state local I'm going to learn about this. And I talked about it last week in my superintendent's training, and a lot of small but rural schools had no idea about this procedure. So it's one of those things that's just kind of an obscure federal law or rule that you just have to comply with as part of, and it would, it would have been noticed in our auditing process.
that you just have to comply with as part of, and it would have been noticed in our auditing process.
Any other questions or discussion? Good question, Robin. Are we going to move on?
Yeah.
And call for vote.
Judy Truitt.
Aye.
Robin Riley.
Aye.
Donna Nizem.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Anna Rollin.
Aye.
Item five, consider taking action on the following contracts and agreements. Are we going to do these one by one?
Yes.
No. Freedom.
Freedom, and then go all of them, okay. I'm going to read them all, A through E. Lease agreement, A, is a lease agreement for land owned by the city of Ponca City. B, a quote from Galaxy Business Equipment Incorporated for furnishings for Liberty Library Media Center. C, an estimate from NDA Marshup, Verner Associates for political plugins. D, estimate from Power School OLC for management software. E, proposal from Seoul Hand Wells Group to replace the intercom system at Liberty Elementary. I entertain a motion to consider taking action.
Make a motion, we approve B through E, and A is separate.
Don has made the motion to approve B through E, and have a separate vote on A. Third, second.
Second.
All right, Robin, any discussion or questions? On B through E. So we're doing B through E right now. Mary Ann, call for vote.
Anna Rollin.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Donna Nizem.
Aye.
Robin Riley.
Aye.
Judy Truitt.
Aye.
Motion on the tables to consider item A, a lease agreement for land owned by the city of Ponca City.
Motion for approval.
Don's made a motion for approval, or is it an approval? Make a turn, you have a motion.
Yes, approve.
Okay. We're doing the second. Okay, now we need a secondary. I'll second. Second, I got Nancy. Any discussion or questions to this board?
Yeah, I've got a comment I'd like to make on it. And I've got a problem with it in the fact that, in my opinion, the city has not lived up to their original agreements that they agreed to. The four hundred and fifty thousand is more than twice the amount that they had originally agreed to. That's my one concern. My second concern is that we do not have hard and fast quotes from the city. It is written as up to four hundred and fifty thousand. That is going to be two hundred, is it going to be three hundred? Is it going to be four hundred and ninety-nine, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars? So I believe the city should force, should be forced to give us hard and fast quotes before, I just don't, I just can't support us approving an up-to amount on a contract of this magnitude.
I have a question for that. I was there whenever you guys had made all of, I think, all the projects and things like that. But on this project, was everything kind of lined out and decided?
The city has added some things to the project that were not in the initial scope that Don and I had first talked to them about.
Which ones?
Bathroom. Bathroom. And that didn't come up till, what, two, three, four months ago? Something like that. Originally, it was not included in it. That's the real problem I have. I understand inflationary cost. I mean, the amount that Don and I had first proposed and they had somewhat agreed to, it was an original estimate. And, yeah, things are going to cost more than they did two years ago or whatever. I agree with that, but twice as much than we had first told them. And it was primarily the bathroom that has caused the increase.
It caused the increase on that. And Jason, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, do they have estimates on how much that bathroom costs? Does it justify that?
Apparently, we've got an estimate on the bathrooms, and it was a little over a hundred thousand dollars to get that modular bathroom set in place. We don't, like Mr. Riley said, we don't have a hard and fast quote on the splash pad relocation, but we're working on that, and what we've been told is just a little over a hundred thousand dollars as well. So we feel like we're getting, we're moving the needle on this project, and we're getting close to what we should have had in writing in place prior to the bond, just to make sure that we're covered and then run into this.
Well, I really don't think we're going to run four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But contractually, we're committed to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, whether we want to be or not. I agree with what Jason is saying. I think we're quite a bit less than that. And I understand that, but I just don't understand why the city can't give us a hard number that, not to exceed, you know, type deal. The number they've given us is just outside compared to what I think the real cost will be. That just might be it.
Any other questions upon this? Okay, we have a motion on four, uh, for approval, seconded by. Call for vote.
Judy Truitt.
Aye.
Anna Rollin.
Aye.
Donna Nizem.
Aye.
Robin Riley.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Item five, we're on item six, which is a motion invoked to the judge of possession for all expenses to discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, employment, and personnel, they have to use that personnel report, and to discuss the virtual purchase or withdrawal of property. Any questions? Make a motion, maybe I do, seconded by Don. Call for vote.
Judy Truitt.
Aye.
Anna Rollin.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Robin Riley.
Aye.
Don.
All right, we're trying to have a fun session. Recital by the board president, the minutes of the executive session were kept by the board minutes clerk and were made confidential. Number nine, consider taking action on recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel. Take a motion?
I told Liz, what would you do if I came?
Hang on a second.
And we need a second?
Sorry.
Second. Motion made by Nancy, seconded by Judy. Judy. That took me a second.
Forget it.
No, I was trying to think of a way to get on to you guys. Come on, get on.
I'm sorry, I'm a bad influence.
Call for vote.
Anna Rollin.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Judy Truitt.
Aye.
Robin Riley.
Aye.
Donna Nizem.
Aye.
Do you have business tonight?
No.
Okay. Take a motion for adjournment?
I'll second.